Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call this committee of the whole budget meeting to order. And if I could have councilors Bodnar and Hoyle move the agenda. Any questions or changes? All in favor? That's carried. Are there any disclosures of interest with regards to the budget? I wouldn't foresee any, but just making sure. Okay, there's none? Okay, so item 4.1 is our 2024 capital and related project budget 2023-160. Mr. Bowles is going to present that this evening. We have staff from all over. Susan, good to see you not on an island anymore. I'm glad you moved over with the group. Not that you have to always conform, but it's a little easier for when we're looking at it, so thank you. But we do have staff here to answer questions, so Brian will stop from time to time to take questions from council. He may call in one of the staff to come forward to answer or clarify anything. So, Mr. Bowles, take it away.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, council, and citizens and residents that are watching at home tonight. And big thank you to all staff that came tonight to help answer questions as we go through. And special thank you to our manager of communications who tried to spice up our budget slides a little bit to add to some of the presentation tonight. So, I'll start with, you know, just the high level here. We've started the same way with all of our budgets the last couple of years is that ultimately, when we put forward a budget, the actual results may differ slightly. We have policies on how we deal with those actual results. Ultimately, at the end of the day, our budget will require to be balanced, and as in every year, we do balance our budgets. On the agenda, we've kind of broken up the night into looking at the 2024 as a budget summary, getting a little bit into the city fundamentals. We're going to get right into the budget detail where you may have some questions with respect to staff. And again, thank you all for coming out tonight. And then we'll move forward. So, high level, you can see on the slide, there's quite a few things to talk about with respect to the summary of the budget. I'll try to go through a number of them, and then we'll take a pause and take a time to answer some questions. First up is the recommendation. By putting forward the budget tonight, the process, and I know council is aware, if council were to approve this budget or provide for any amendments, it would then move forward to council next Tuesday for final approval. We also put forward in the recommendation something that, working with council and staff, put forward a couple of years ago, that once approved, we'd have the go-ahead as staff to start working on these projects immediately. When we're setting up the budget, I think it's important, and we've worked with council. Council's done a revamp of the mission, vision, and values of the city. And just to reiterate, the vision of the city is a healthy and vibrant waterfront community embracing growth for future generations. And I know everybody is quite excited about the mission statement to provide that exceptional small-town experience, but do so in a big way. And we've identified our corporate values, and this picture here was right from Canal days, and we know we've had a lot of positivity with respect to some of the Newport-Covern wear that we have going on. So, when we started the budget process, we had to make sure, and I know council asked a lot of questions with strategic planning, will it align with the strategic plan? And our four, our five pillars: environmental, climate change, welcome, livable, and healthy community, economic prosperity, increased housing options, and sustainable and resilient infrastructure. As we go through, you're going to see that we're really going to concentrate on two of those, really call them out for some additional discussion, but all of our projects address all five. And when we were doing the strategic plan, we had that, quite a bit of conversation about how are we going to achieve these strategic pillars? And I think council will remember, but for anybody that's watching, the key at this city is really if we take care of our people and we try to make things simple, we'll do projects of value, and we'll ultimately succeed with our customer, we'll succeed with our five strategic plan goals. So, quick highlights before we get into some of the details. There's quite a bit in this budget. 1.54 million for roads. That would be a 20% budget increase over last year. Wastewater. Council has expressed numerous times to move forward with wastewater projects. We'll talk about those. $10 million with respect to water relining, but one-third of the city would be relined under this project. There is a requirement or a need for an enterprise resource planning software, which is really HR and finance. Finance being a software that is no longer supported at the city with respect to HR. We would look to go digital and move off of paper. And in doing so, in the spirit of what a lot of municipalities are working with, is trying to do this as cost-effective as possible, looking to do a project with Niagara Falls. Council's approved with respect to the DMAFRA grant. I think council will remember, it was about $32 million. We came a couple of months ago. That grant is in front of the province right now, and we would be putting funds away in this budget to move forward for that grant. And that would do a number of the storm sewers within the city. I think it would be three quadrants, council will remember. We'd be addressing aggressively. Sidewalks, we're looking at increasing the sidewalk budget by doubling it this year from $300,000 to $600,000. I have some slides later that go into the real detail that show still how much further we need to go with sidewalks. And culvert and structural repairs, multi-year project, but for $610,000. And if there's questions, we'll get into the details as we go through the projects. A couple other budget highlights. Heritage rehabilitation, I actually received a question from a citizen today with respect to that, but Tennessee Avenue, $300,000 with respect to the gates there. Fire and radio system, looking to go digital. It'd be four years, setting aside $150,000 over the next four years, and we'd work with the chief to be able to take his system to go digital. Event infrastructure, we do host a lot and invite a lot of people to the city of Port Coburn, so working with the parks and recs groups, looking at enhancing some of the infrastructure to support that. GIS, many of the councils, and unfortunately, the people that are maybe watching their presentation, haven't had a chance to see some of the technology that's coming out about mapping the city, but that work is still ongoing, and we'd continue it over the next two years. Our goal is ultimately to make the mapping of the city with respect to where water, wastewater, roads, easements, et cetera are, make it all digital so the public can see and be able to click right on our website and have access to it. The goal is hopefully it will help with development, it will help with people planning out their properties. Road ends, we're looking at road end improvements. It's a placeholder, I just want to stress that it's a placeholder. Public Works would come back with another report going forward with respect to road ends and what the next steps are. And then industrial property and land development, there's quite a bit going on with industrial property. This would be about setting some things up so that we could welcome some industrial companies to the city. A couple other things just along this lines, when we talk about our strategic plan, this budget does try to tackle environmental climate challenges, so just want to highlight, there's an ice resurfacer, we'd be looking at going electronic with respect to that, to be electric. We're also looking at two projects. One would be a net-zero recreation facility out at Shirksen to replace the current aging facility. We've been doing our building condition assessments, and we do believe this would be the best route forward. Initial conversations have started with Shirksen, and we look, if council were to approve it, we'd set a committee and work with them to move forward. The other project is, and I think citizens that may have, and council, I know you're aware, we've talked about this before, the utilities within the city. About half of the utility bill in the city is actually at the Valley Health and Wellness Center. So, there are grants out there, and this would ask for a matching grant that we'd put in some dollars and we'd apply for a grant, and then we'd go forward and do an energy efficiency review to see if we can do solar, cogen, et cetera, to be able to bring our total costs of the wellness center down. Also on the environmental and climate change area, we do think there is a bit of a game-changer. It'll be coming in the operating budget, not in the capital budget, but we are looking at significantly increasing the tree budget. Council adopted in their strategic plan the desire to increase the tree canopy with respect to its environmental and climate actions, so that is something that will be coming with the operating budget. You might be wondering, why did we put it in the operating budget? It is there generally because it's going to be ongoing, and it's going to be going on for the next 40, or until 2040 at least, to be able to achieve that goal. Another one under environmental and climate that I wanted to highlight here is really we are trying to tackle council's goal with respect to flooding events and storm resilience. Again, that is through the DMAFRA grant, and as identified, we will be putting funds aside to be able to do our matching. And then to flip, to look at the sustainability and resilient infrastructure, we are looking at that as well. Our goal ultimately is to move everything to have, to move our assets to a spot where they have a longer life than 20%. Just a reminder for council, once you get to 20%, you're basically on an asset assigned as very poor. So, any asset that has a rating below 20% isn't poor, it's very poor. And ultimately, the goal here, and the goal that we've set with council, is to try to move this above the 20%. And that's why we've increased, and we're recommending increasing the roads budget by 20% and the sidewalk budget by doubling it. Again, sustainability and resilient infrastructure, when you look at that, we set goals to improve the water, wastewater, and storm, and this budget significantly addresses that. Many people might be, might have read, might not have, we have the Water Wednesdays that are going out, but hopefully people have been kind of following those. And one of the stats that you will find is for every liter of water that we might bill to a resident, or we might bill to a commercial property, we're actually sending almost three liters back to the waste treatment plant to be cleaned, and that's because of INI that we pick up in the system. And that's one of the reasons why the big investment that we're proposing with respect to lining the wastewater plants. Again, on sustainable and resilient infrastructure, again, we're looking at our DCs, and in order to move forward, and I'll reiterate it later on in the presentation, we really haven't incorporated the DC funds in this budget yet. The DC report will come back in 2024, and we'll look to council to help approve that moving forward. Those funds may change some of our projections and what citizens of the city have to put into the budget going forward, and we could have more conversations as we move forward. I can take a quick pause, I know that's a big highlight, and then I can get into kind of the process before we do that. So, I don't know if council has any questions on the highlights.
I'll start off to my left, Brian.
The commissary mayor, through you to Brian. So, just so, because I had this question, when we're talking about doing something at Shirksen, this is the Shirksen Community Center, not Shirksen Shores, okay? So, we all know that, but if somebody was, you know, listening, they might think it's someplace else. Thank you.
Thank you. Just to clarify, it's at the corner of Shirksen Road and Empire Road, facility that was formerly an elementary school, for those that may not know that. Counselor Brunum.
Thank you, worship. Just a couple of quick things in what you've run through, Brian, that I jotted down. One is your goal, water to wastewater by 2040. I didn't think anybody is that one-for-one, because every system leaks and will always leak, and that to me seems to be a rather utopian. Wondering if you could respond?
Yeah, so, sorry, through the mayor to the counselor. I think it's a good question. We are setting it ambitiously. Ultimately, we may be a little bit above that, but when one thinks about the amount of wastewater that's generated from the water that one purchases, one purchases water, and then they consume it, they wash their car, they put it on the lawn. So, in a fully operational, fully tight system, it should, wastewater that's going to the plant should be less than what the water purchase should be. So, our goal is to get it down to as close to one as possible. It's an ambitious goal, and right now, we're going to shoot for ambitious, and then we can talk to council as we move forward.
Okay, just two quick other ones. Just on that, on something like, and I don't want to get too penantic about it, but like the ice resurfacer. So, are things like that that aren't a... So, we always have one, we're going to have a different one, and the different one we have might be electric, and then that'll expire at some period of time. So, why is that not in like a fleet budget that's in the operating? In other words, should it be something that's on a replacement cycle? So, would it, could it come under fleet ultimately?
Through the mayor to the counselor, well, all, we actually did budget it in the fleet budget, in the capital budget. We haven't budgeted in the operating budget because of the life of the asset, we'd have to capitalize it. And I might have confused things when I was talking about the trees and it was being operating. There's kind of an interesting rule in accounting that, like, living items, you can't capitalize. So, because you can't capitalize, they don't really go into a cap. We said, well, maybe they don't go into the capital budget, maybe we'll put it into the operating budget with respect to the trees. But when it comes to the ice resurfacer, we are going to have to put it on the balance sheet, we're going to capitalize it, we're going to have to amortize it. I apologize to everyone for the accountanties on discussing that, but that is why we ended up putting it in the capital budget, and it is in the, we did put it in the capital fleet budget. I'm just calling it out specifically with relation to this goal.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Mark, go ahead.
Thank you, worship. Mark, just a couple of questions. I think I already know the answer, but example, the 1.2 million enterprise resources planning with Niagara Falls, are we just talking, we're not talking any personnel, we're just talking software and computer technology stuff, if I'm correct?
Yeah, through the mayor to the council, that is correct, but it does include some temporary, like, work and support to be able to get over the hump and get the information into it. But there's no permanent additional staff that we're asking. In fact, which I, we don't think we did a great job in the sheets explaining, but we do see that we'll end up being down a staff member within the city as a result of doing the project too as we go forward. So, we do actually see there to be some savings with respect to that.
Counselor.
Sorry to hear you going. My other question, the GIS approval, is that the same, that's for material, not labor?
Yeah, yeah, through the mayor to the council, the GIS really relates to the city's mapping, and that relates to using a third party to bring us to where we need to be. It's not actually buying new software, it's actually taking all of the data that we've been working on and council's been investing in over the last three years, and getting it all into a visual sense, so that way we can update it, maintain it internally as staff, but you as council and the public can have access to what we have now in multiple different reports. It's about the, basically making all the information we have public.
Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Anything further? Counselor.
To Director Bowles, just a question about the electric ice resurfacer. Do we have maybe thought about contacting other corporations in town to have an initiative for clean energy to purchase that for us, or have partnership?
Through the mayor to the counselor, we definitely will. With any initiative, we do look for partners, and we are working on a new partnership strategy going forward, and we will be including projects like this, and we can take that and make sure this one's kind of at the top of the list when we're talking to corporate partners, about wrapping it and making sure we let people know about it.
Counselor. Anything further? Go ahead, Brian.
Great. So, the process for council, council I think is aware of the process, but I just also for the public, just have the dates out. Staff across the city have been working for quite some time. Most people had already, most departments had submitted their budgets by June, and we spent the summer going through them. Right now, we're obviously talking about the capital budget, but we're looking to have the levy and the operating budget out at the beginning of October, and then the rate budgets for water and wastewater out at the beginning of November. So, there'll be two other budget meetings to dive into the operations and the water, wastewater, and storm sewer operations. So, every year, council asks me, oh...
Yep, go ahead.
Thank you, worship. Brian, you may be going to this next, but the chart indicated council approval. So, we spent the last meeting of council ensuring that the library in Rose Lawn came back to us in a way that all other departments did that, and it was to also ensure that we didn't bake something in before the final product was finished. And so, I have a real concern that if you present the capital budget tonight and you go for council approval on September 26th, we're already doing something in my mind akin to that, unless you can explain it differently. If we approved a 2.5% capital budget because we had the presentation tonight, and on September 26th, we passed that, then to me, that's baked into whatever else is to come, which becomes addition, addition, you get your final number. And my concern is that when I get to that final number, because I haven't had the debate about the operating budget, that, and we don't like the final outcome number, we're going to be potentially slashing from the last thing that's in, rather than say, oh, by the way, Mr. Bowles, you know, that three, that doubling of the money for sidewalks by 100%, I'd now like to slide that back to 50% because something you brought up in the operating budget, we all agreed we wanted, but we wanted to stay under a certain cap. So, why do we need to, I mean, I'm happy if you're going to tell me it's a placeholder, but I just don't like the idea of actually having to go back, because obviously, I'm going to feel, it's easy to feel comfortable about this number before looking at all the other numbers that are going to pile onto this. So, can you explain why we have to pass it on the 26th?
Brian?
Yeah, through the mayor to the counselor and council, I guess I'll have to put it in this perspective, the city is working on a capital plan, and it needs to fund the capital plan. The operating and the operations of the city are a different path than the capital plan. So, if council isn't comfortable with supporting this type of dollars into the capital plan, council should make recommendations, amendments, et cetera, to this. So, I would view them as very separate documents, very separate components, but both have a charge to the taxpayer. So, if council's not comfortable with the 1.6 recommended increase with respect to capital, we should be talking in capital about adjusting the capital budget. And then, when we get to the operating budget, if council's not comfortable with the operational increase, we should be talking about reducing the operational increase within the operational budget. I don't know if that helps, but I view them very separate, as separate documents, and as the slides that will show, our underfunding of capital is so significant that as staff, we would not recommend cutting the capital budget.
Counselor.
I guess I'm concerned that, I don't necessarily like to use this line, but there, our customer, the consumer, there's only the one tax bill, and that has what that ultimate round number is. And I guess I would argue that there are things in the capital budget that, to me, would be sacrosanct. I wouldn't want to cut the water and wastewater issue. But I mentioned sidewalks as one, if I'm $300,000 short in something that's in the operating budget, I guess I'd look at my sidewalk contribution as it wasn't perfect, but it brought the needle forward by 50%, which is a significant increase. And even with $600,000, we'll still be deeply in a hole on sidewalks and ultimately have to get there. But I think there should be room to not, I mean, it would be very difficult for any of us on this dais to say the things that are in that capital budget aren't good for the city and in some cases necessary. We only have to look at what we ran on, water, wastewater, water, wastewater, water, wastewater. So, I don't think it's unreasonable to, like, I'm very uncomfortable about going back on some of the items that are in capital that could be delayed when I have no idea what end number we're going to be at. And I know this sounds redundant, but I can't agree with you that at the end of the day, that whilst they are two separate things, they all roll together and affect the taxpayer. And to pre-approve something with really what sounds like the guise of not being able to go back and pull it out, and so let's say the levy is October 24th, a month from now, and feel like, sorry, it's too late, you now can't have that operating thing unless you want to increase the levy higher than you think is warranted. I don't also want to have Public Works starting the process of doing something and find out that they've already started and the, you know, horse has left the stable. So, I'm just uncomfortable about giving a percentage of the levy full approval that you can start spending on the 27th of September, when there's still more to come by the 24th of October.
Bowles?
And I don't want to throw the baby out with the bathwater, but I'm concerned that we're baking something in without having an idea what the end product is.
Mr. Bowles?
Through the mayor to the counselor and council, I guess, one, we've kind of worked on this process for the last four years, but it's up to council to determine when you want to approve the capital budget. So, if you want to approve the capital budget today, and we don't send it to, we've asked the clerk to do this, we don't send it to council for final approval until October 24th, instead of sending it on September 26th. From staff perspective, we could do it, it just, it delays people's ability to get into some of the projects, but from my perspective, if we start on the 24th, if that's where council wants to, I don't know if I have a huge issue.
Counselor.
I guess I would approach it this way. If there's, so, let's say, for example, there's a pending grant for storm water, or you need to start the storm water in order to get it into the ground, then I think that's an extenuating circumstance is that, I mean, you come to us in the middle of the year. If some crisis came up where there was an opportunity to do something, we find the money. If we didn't have enough money in physician recruitment, and all of a sudden, you, three doctors land on its door, I don't think there's a counselor, or going backwards, a council that I've seen that wasn't able to find the money to make sure that happens. But I don't necessarily see it that it has to be an all-or-nothing game. So, I don't know if you could comment on that.
Bowles?
Through the mayor to the counselor and council, I don't know if I have a direct answer to it, it's more a generality. Council can direct us as staff to approve this when you want to or not, or adjust anything or any project within it at any point in time. So, I'm, as an employee of the city, I'm really indifferent to when you want to approve your capital budget. I'd really like to have it done before the end of the year. I'd really like to have it done before the end of the year.
Counselor Bagu.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do agree with Counselor Bruno and I like your suggestion of October final approval. There are some projects, the wastewater, the $10 million, which I had added before, and I know that's dependent on grant money, which will come probably in December anyways. Well, actually, we know if we're going to get part of the grant, if I'm not mistaken. And there's some things that have to be done, you know, right away. The fire radio system upgrades from the fire department, yeah, no problem, you know? And other things that, but I do agree with actually both of you as you were arguing about it. But you both made the good points at the end and I'll go with that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor. So, before we debate the final recommendation, which is coming at the end, I'll cut you guys off there and we'll let Mr. Bowles move on because that will be debated a little later on. That's okay.
I think that, to go along with, I think, the conversation we had, the tax and rate impacts. Now, we did print off a slide, council will be looking at it. There was an adding error in one of the columns, so please use the one that's on the screen and we updated it online as well. But based on the recommendations that we have here, the blended increase would be 1.66. Now, that will come down because we haven't factored in assessment growth and we're still working with impact to try to finalize the assessment growth. And then on the rate impacts, the storm is up quite substantially. It looks like a big percent, but it is $46, about $3.85 a month. And council, remember, we talked about this when we talked about the Demafra grant, when we were talking about going forward and asking for that $32 million project. We were going to have to increase the storm sewer levy to be able to fund that project. And then wastewater and water would be up accordingly on that sheet.
So, just, sorry, Brian, go back. So, but on those rates that you show there, part of that is what the region is proposing with regards to their water wastewater budget? Is that correct?
Through your South Mayor to yourself and council, it is, these are just the capital. So, the region's increase will be in addition to that. And I think that's to Counselor Bruno's comments that when you look at the wastewater and wastewater rates, they do need to go up significantly. And I have a couple more slides that will talk about if we don't do it, the potential outcomes that we could be looking at, which is why investing it is so important, which is why we recommend the approval. But for all intents and purposes, that is just our capital. That's, those dollars will be going into pipes within the city of Port Coburn.
Just want to clarify again. Counselor?
Thank you, Mr. Bowles. Just a little bit of clarity, you said, see how you've got them split, which is very good to the rate impacts. But, so certainly, at least my understanding is storm is a separate rate that's on the tax bill as a separate line item and I see that as a rate. I do know it's in addition to the levy. On the water and wastewater, so that impact for capital works being done in this presentation, is some of that being funded by the taxes? Because there's not really a lot there in the rate budget.
Bowles?
Through the mayor to council, historically, there has still been certain costs on the rate side that have been subsidized, I guess, a little bit.
Yep.
When we bring back the 2024 operating budget, like, there will be no more subsidy. It will be 100% rate will stand alone as rate.
Okay, so any of this, besides storm, any water wastewater is still going to be funded out of the rate?
100% out of rate.
Great, thank you.
Pipes get funded from the rate budget, 100%.
Counselor Bagu.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you, I know the region put out a little notice quite a few months ago about the rates going up next year quite a bit. And would you have any insight on what those increases would do to these rates?
Yeah, so, through the mayor to the councillor and council, the region's report talked about a 9.8% increase on their charges. So, when council's looking at what your rate increase is going to be, and you'll see in my future slides, we'd estimate the rate increase to be at 12% in the city of Port Coburn. Majority of it is driven by that rate increase and then the rest of it's driven by actually trying to do this construction. And I'm going to show you a couple of slides to kind of show if we don't do the construction, like, the fee is going to go up even more. And it really goes up because as the cost of cleaning water goes up and we, our pipes continue to deteriorate and our INI gets worse, we have to have even more water cleaned. So, then the charge goes up even more. So, if we don't actually take the step to invest and fix it today, we are going to get worse and worse and 12% will sound like a good number potentially.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Go ahead, Brian.
So, I've tried to do, and I know council's asked me in the past, can you give me some indication of how we sit compared to other municipalities? And we put together this chart with respect to our assessment in the city of Port Coburn for the average house. We then looked at what our Nigga region taxes are. We've looked at what the city taxes and the education. And in all of this lines you can see in the chart, our combined region, city and education is actually substantially lower on the three combined, even when you add in the storm sewer charge to everybody else. So, we actually sit very competitive. On the city alone side, we are higher. You will see as that component alone, it's highlighted at 2,055 versus the 1,783. I've had residents in the past point this out to me as well. And what I, what we talk about is one thing that we have when you try to compare us to some other municipalities our size is we do have a full-time fire department, which is a different cost structure. And we are investing, even though we have some big gaps and we're going to talk about our gaps in infrastructure, we are investing in capital. Almost 17% of the total levy budget goes to the capital budget. It's a big investment. And we'll talk about how much councils over the last couple of years have increased that in a future slide. So, I've also taken a look at water wastewater and on water wastewater, we did change our averages. Council, remember, we had a report a couple of months ago where we used to say we used 150 M3s and now we do 188. We do 188 because we recalculate the average of what people are using across the city. And when you look at that, our wastewater is actually, our water wastewater combined is about $103 higher than the next closest. I think it says closes, but maybe that's the accountant in me there, closest. Lamb. And again, land is local area municipality. And if you look at the average, we're about $400 higher. So, we're quite a bit higher, but it's almost all on the wastewater side. And that's where the big investment that we're recommending as a starting point for wastewater. Now, when you add the two together, you can see what the total cost of homeownership is versus what a local area municipality is. And we're actually on a combined water and taxes. The average resident here will actually pay slightly less. Even though you're paying more on water, you're paying a little bit less on the property tax side for an average house. Net-net, we're a little bit less. So, we're not, we're not uncompetitive in that perspective. Now, these are the couple of slides that I did want to talk to council about. There's no way to, looking at one or two years is difficult. Looking at 10 years is really difficult. But people have asked, if we don't do this investment, what's going to happen? So, there are financial plans done by many municipalities. The region has one too. When you look at the future growth potentially of our water wastewater just from looking at regional plans, if we were to experience the 10% increase that we have this year with the region, our $1,000 charge in 10 years, if we do nothing, could be almost $2,600. Or if it's at 12%, it'd be almost $3,000 for the average house versus the local area municipalities, if they grew, they'd only grow to 1,800. There's a big differential gap and that's why you can see the red line. The red line is really about suggesting and recommending to council that we do do the larger investment now and we start to try to bring the line down to what local area municipalities are at. And the only way to do that is to tackle inflow and infiltration. And we've had multiple presentations on it and that's where the big investments in this capital budget are directed to. The next slide really talks about, and I don't have to go into too much detail. I think most looking at it can see that doing capital today will most likely be cheaper than doing capital tomorrow. So, delaying capital and unfortunately, there have been decisions by delaying budgets or adjusting budgets or whatever it is to delay capital and certain projects haven't occurred over time. And that's where we have the funding gap and that's where councils, in the recent councils, have been investing very heavily to close the funding gap. Still a long way to go, but that is about, doing projects today is going to help us down the road. Now, just a couple of slides and we'll take a break here for more questions, but risks of the budget. There is a number, I don't have to go over everyone. I know council, everybody's had a chance to review these, but there's no doubt when it comes to capital, one of the more complicated ones is inflation and we are using 5% as our mid to longer term inflation number when we're trying to forecasting out inflation right now. But interest rates, interest rates as they go up, borrowing money also gets more expensive and that can adjust budgets. So, we do talk about budgets being estimates. We will continue to monitor and before we could even issue the debt, we would have to come back to council and seek approval and bylaws to actually issue that debt. This is, today is just about putting funds aside so that way we know we could pay the debt in the future. I could take a break after the summary and then we can get into a couple of where the city is financially.
Questions, I'll start on my right. Anything over here? Left? No, proceed.
I think one of the things, just to frame the budget as we're going forward, is there is a report coming to the next council. It's going to talk about growth projections. This was a slide that was pulled out and the mayor actually asked me just to remind the viewers with respect to what DGA and BUA stands for. So, DGA is designated greenfield areas and BUA is built-up areas. So, this is a conversation that's going to happen at the next council meeting. It's going to talk about over the next 20-plus years where the growth is going to happen. And based on the work that's been done, there's an estimate of about 6,000, almost 6,500 units to be built going forward, which I think projected or translated into almost 16,000 residents. And it's itemized by where the growth could happen and where the, what kind of projects would exist. So, that's something for council to be looking at for the next budget meeting, but, or for the next council meeting, but when you're doing budgets, we as staff wanted to at least highlight this slide that we're trying to think about that in every project that we bring forward to council. Another comment that gets asked is, well, where are we with the current capital projects? We did just a couple of months ago give an update with respect to where we were. This is that same slide. We will be giving you another update in about a month and a bit of where the capital projects are. We do think we're pretty close to being, continuing to be on track. You will see on this presentation, it shows that we're proposing only 35 projects in this capital budget. We started T1 with 117, so that would be 152. And then we hope to, in T2, close out some and by T3, close out a number. So, it's very possible that we're down to about 80 or 90 projects to close this year, even with the T4, even with this budget being approved today. And as we go through some of these projects, I think it's important just to highlight that projects are getting done. These were some great pictures at Nickel Beach with respect to the beach parking. We had the trail system put in and the lights put in at HH Knoll. We had at the Valley Health and Wellness Center, we had the roofs done. We had HH Knoll, again, I think that's a picture of the trails and rehab to get across one of the train tracks on Main Street. The Erie Street Water Main Replacement Project, as well as the Port Coburn sign, City Hall roof. There's a lot of other projects. I think anybody that's walked down the promenade recently will see the wood, the old wood that was rotting is now replaced and Public Works has a new concrete and a painted rail. A number of projects have been completed. And just a couple more slides on just the state of the city and finances. As of right now, we look to, we look to barring no new debt. We'll end 2024 with about $25 million. But as council will know, with respect to the disaster mitigation adaptation fund, we actually budgeted for about $12 million in debt as well as we're looking to wastewater lining, which was recommended in this report, would be another 10. That would take us to about $47 million. Common question I get is, how much debt could the city issue? The provincial's letter, there's a calculation that's done, does say that we could issue up to $100 million in debt should we need to. The other, just point on just where the city is financially. Question came at one of the previous, I think, budget or council meetings about reserves and how much money do we actually have in reserves for infrastructure? We've identified what our forecasted reserves are in a number of these areas. You'll see that the Marina has the loan it's repaying on this. You'll also see that there are growing dollars set aside for storm, wastewater and the water main, but those would go to fund our Demafra obligations with respect to matching funds. So, it's not like they're just sitting there to be used. We would be using them in projects that we're putting forward to council. And I think if you take a look at now, if we go from debt and we go to reserves that help fund, it's important before we get into the projects, how do you come up with the budget? What is the need? Well, first of all, I think it's important to look at funding sources. We have the levy, you have the rate budgets. There are donations and user fees that help fund as well as debt. And as mentioned before, development charges is something that we are working on and we do think will have a substantial impact on capital funding going forward. We've shown this to council before. It was about a year ago that this graph came up and we were talking about how much is required. There's over $100 million in deferred maintenance that needs to be done at the city right now and this chart shows how that's going to grow. And you can see by the gray line, it's going to grow to by 2047, based on the factors that we've identified, there are almost $1 billion that you'll have to replace across the whole city. And you can see how the goal would be to grow those budget funds, either through grants, tax levy. And what we've talked about many times is even efficiency and divestitures. And there will be conversations going forward in 2024 and 2025 as we continue to grow our asset management. And I think some councils have made reference to it. Maybe some sidewalks that are in less dense or less busy intersect, or busy
Neighborhoods.
Neighborhoods. Maybe you don't need a sidewalk on both sides of the street when we go to replace them and that can help bring the sidewalk budgets down. And those are, those are things that may have not a huge impact on how we live our lives, but definitely save on funding. Now, the funding level, just a reminder, council, we don't talk about it too often, but the net book value, the cost minus the amortization, has about $134 million of assets that you oversee as councillors. So, when you, there is a requirement in the Ontario regulations that says we have to talk about, well, what's our amortization and how much money are we actually investing? So, if you add up the levy, the rates, our grants and the debt, you'll get to capital funding sources of almost $11 million. Our amortization is about 5.8. So, we're well in advance of amortization. And some councils, councillors will remember like 10 years ago when municipalities weren't even funding up the amortization, right? So, this council's come a long way. But then if you go and look at what the asset management plan says, we should be spending almost $17 million a year just on roads, water, wastewater and storm sewers. So, just on that alone, we're short 5.9 million. And then we have to account that in June of 2024, we'll be back with you with the asset management plan for recreation, information technology, facilities and fleet. So, that gap will grow as we add those, that asset management plan in. And then that will complete the asset management plans for the city. And if anybody wants to look at the asset management plan, you can see it right online as well or we can get you a copy. This is a chart that we've been using for the last couple of years. It kind of explains the reconciliation of how we get to our funding levels specifically for the levy. We start with the 2023 budget. We have been using a catch-up factor. Municipalities across Ontario, Canada have been doing this catch-up factor model. We're at 2.25. We've been modeling a 5% inflation target here. We have looked at, you know, additional or changes in the grant funding that we receive as well as as we pay off debt, we're reinvesting that back in the capital budget to try to reduce the funding gap. So, that's how we get to ultimately how much funds is available. And then this was a chart that I thought was very interesting. You know, we kind of picked 2020 because that was kind of a big change when we had COVID and everything changes. So, it was a good year to look at. But the city's capital budget But the city's capital budgets in 2020 on the levy was about 2.1 million. And effectively on storm and wastewater, it was zero because all the funds had been allocated either to debt or there was no additional funds you could really spend. And then in water, you had about 436. If we approve this budget, you can see where the dollar figures are and how we're actually, how this council and the council before it started to really, I think, make a serious dent in getting projects done within the city of Port Coburn. On that note, we have talked to council about building multi-year budgets. One of the comments that we did is as we still have to finalize the 2024 asset management plan, in doing that, we started looking at the future funding model. So we haven't assigned projects to every one of these categories in 25, 6, 7 and 8 yet. But this would be a general model that we would be coming back to council with. There's no approval to this funding model right now. It's just, I think it's beneficial for council to see what future budgets, future capital budgets might look. And if we stay on the same model that we've been using the last couple of years, this is what the budgets would grow to over time. And we've identified some of the assumptions here. And I think this is where it's just a recognition that specifically here on the center item, storm sewer, in the 2024 budget, we're budgeting the 33% for capital and in 2025 it'd be 33%. And that's how we fund the debt requirement to do the storm sewer with respect to the DMAFRA grant that we put forward. Now, again, and I think in case council is going to ask, if the DMAFRA grant isn't received, we'll be back in front of council because those storm sewers have to be done anyways. So we have to figure out a program of how we're going to do it and how we're going to prioritize it with council. So you can see the assumptions to how that works there. I guess the last, I think this might be the last two slides on on funding level and how we sit within a city. These percentages here is the funding gap. And, you know, I think this is kind of going back to when I was asked, do you approve this budget now? Or do you approve it later? And do you look at it? Do you look at the capital budget in silos as the capital and the capital budget is operating? The the funding gap is so large still in 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 the capital budget that that's where staff have it. That we would strongly recommend that we don't cut the the capital budget going forward. But you can see on the roads, we're 82% funding gap. Roads and renewal, which is everything from streetlights to culverts, 74 sidewalks. With the new investment in sidewalks here, 46% storm. We'd be at 74% gap, wastewater 72 and water 78. Now, when you look at the funding model and how we can grow, we can absolutely grow to to handle this, to fix it over a period of time. It's just going to take some time to get there. And I'll, I know there's a lot of information and we're actually going to get to the budget next. But this, I don't know if there's any questions on some of that city stats.
Counselor Baggan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you, I think we might need a correction here. You mentioned that the Bel Air Center roof was completed. Two days ago, it still wasn't. I think it's almost done, but not quite done yet.
Well, through the, through the.
I just don't want to get through the press that was done.
Through the mayor to the council. I appreciate the clarification. I I think, is it fair to say it's almost, it's kind of getting to substantially complete? I can see the invoices coming in now, so I I'm going to say substantially complete, but it it still has some more work to do. So thank you for pointing that out.
Thank you. The other one is you mentioned outstanding projects. It's coming in about a month to council. Is it possible to have that before we do the final approval? I always like to see outstanding projects that we haven't completed yet before I approve new ones. So if we get that, I really appreciate it, Mr. Mayor.
Through the mayor to the councillor and council, we all will, we will issue that update at the same time we always do. It'll actually go out with the October 4th information for the operating budget. So you'll have it with lots of time to look at before we meet again.
Okay. Questions? Brian?
Sure. So this slide really is, there's a lot of information on this slide, but this is basically the projects by, I guess, by category that we put together. And then we'll get into the actual projects. So at this point in time, after each slide, I'll do a pause. And I think there's like 12 or so slides of each of the categories. So if there's any questions, we can, staff can come up and we can answer questions as we go forward. So included in the facilities budget, there's the energy feasibility study for Valley Health and Wellness Center, which I brought forward. City Hall, we'd also be looking at adding in an energy audit. Net zero building feasibility. If you're wondering about City Hall, if you read the details, it's interesting. City Hall actually has as much hydro as the Ops Center does. But City Hall, like the Ops Center is open a lot later. So this is where I think we benefit by doing that and making some adjustments to how we operate City Hall. The Valley Health and Wellness Center, there are some capital improvements put forward. There's the events infrastructure under facilities, it made it there. And then the fire training area is also included under facilities. That was A6 you'll find, as well as the reserve fund transfer. So we are doing and councils, I know council's aware, but just for the public that might be watching, we are doing building condition assessments of every single building that we have. And we know that the investment requirements to some of these buildings are going to be significant. And that's where we're putting, we're recommending that those dollars be put aside. So that way, as these reports get finalized and we bring them back to council, council can make those investment decisions as we go forward throughout the year. So that way, we don't have to wait a whole year to then say there's there's funding. Because those building condition assessments are going to start coming in within the next couple of months. I don't know if there's, I don't, I know council's read the budget. I don't know if you have any specific questions on any of those projects. Public Works is here to help answer.
Counselor Baggan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A5, Mr. Bowles, the events infrastructure talks about it come out of the Canal Days debriefing session. I know we haven't had a Canal Days committee meeting yet. So that's another checkmark for Counselor Bruno and not approving it tonight for next week. So I don't know if the meeting is scheduled yet or I haven't heard, but.
So through the mayor to the councillor, I think there's been about 10. We haven't brought it, we haven't brought all of the information back to the committee of that has councillors, the working committee that has councillors on it yet. And when, if that's going to get done before the next budget or not, I'm not 100% sure. We are looking at it as a placeholder that we come back to council and say, these are the recommendations after we get through the whole process. So there has been a number that have happened already and people have brought forward ideas. This is about creating a placeholder so that way council has the ability to make some investments where they need to make those investments once that, once it comes back to council.
I go, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Yeah, counsel, that actually shouldn't go to that committee. All due respect, that should come to full council. We could talk about it at the committee, but quite frankly, it's the council that makes that decision. That committee doesn't have that authority to make that decision. We can recommend it, but I think it should be the full council to debate it. But certainly because I know you said in the committee is that to bring that forward with regards to councillors that may not know about it. But it should, it should really be debated and talked about here. Okay?
Thank you. Maybe before I go, just to clarify with the councillor, because we may not have had those, like it's a placeholder, like are you okay with that as a placeholder? Because it might be still a placeholder when it comes to October.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, depends what the definition of placeholder means.
So through the mayor to the councillor, it will be a line item in the budget that staff won't spend on until we come back with a report to council.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I'm good with that.
Good. Thank you. Go ahead, Brian. Oh, sorry.
Through the mayor to Brian, or the chief, can we do the same thing for the fire training area? Because I I'd just like to know more about it. If a report could come with, what's that about? You're upgrading the back training area? I'd take it.
Chief?
Through the mayor to council, what we're, what we're doing is we move the existing trailer over. We're going to put in a gravel pad, but we're going to bring in sea crates, create a burn area, car extrication pit so that everything is is nice and neat and we're not using other facilities within the city and.
Yeah, because I just seen it and I said, okay. I'm just hoping that there's a future report on or something, information.
Through the mayor to council, if you do go down further in the attachments.
In the A6.
Yeah, there is an explanation of what a high level plan is for that area.
Counselor? Okay. Borger?
Through your worship to Director Bowles. So I know you mentioned there's a couple of items that have placeholders. And now that we understand what you mean by placeholders, it means they'll be coming back to us. Are you able to put in the chart, little ref, appendix B, where it has all the capital projects? That's like say which ones on that that are placeholders or maybe provide some type of identification? I understand in the descriptions, like the detailed descriptions, it explains it. But it'd be nice to have like a summary sheet that kind of explains that, shows that.
Yeah, through the mayor to councillor, we're, we're happy to put, create an infographic and put a P or something like that on the, on the sheet going forward.
All right. Brian?
So fleet and equipment, fleet and equipment can be broken down into really one project because it's replacing fleet. But we have a, a number of them identified. So there's two axle dump trucks, the electric ice resurfacer, a zero turn mower, and I think there's some plow attachments. The dollar figure of these, we have noted that the cost of fleet and equipment has gone up significantly in the last couple of years. We would be looking at doing this purchase over two years. And you will note that part of the, it actually is funded by both levy and rate. Quite often, things are varied distinctly, but in this budget, there actually is some shared and and part of it's being funded by the rates and part of it's being funded by the capital levy. I, through the, I don't know if there's any questions on.
Counselor Baggan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you, Director Bowles or Steve. It says that the zero turn mower, staff will be reviewing the potential. Like if you come into budget asking for it, it should have already been reviewed. And you, you want to tell us what you want rather than telling us you're going to review it. Because I brought that up in past budget meetings about electric vehicles and we're going to look at it, but nothing's ever happened about it.
Through your worship to Counselor Baggan. So we do have, we are looking at it with, we want to investigate and actually use some of the mowers that other municipalities are using too. There's some that are actually remote operated and there's some that actually are just electric and then there's diesel ones. So basically, some of the concerns we have with the electric ones when pertaining to our roads operations is that we're using them for eight hours a day and we need to make sure that they're actually going to last for that full eight hours, rather than by multiple units to get through a single day. So that's one of the main concerns that we have right now with those units. And that's why we do want to do some further investigation to make sure they're actually going to work for our specific operations at certain locations. If they were stable, like on the library or museum grounds, we would 100% be in with all electric because we know they're there. We know it's going to take three to four hours to cut and then they can be recharged again. But right now, we do need to investigate a little further for the actual operations of that particular unit.
Counselor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd be happy to hear a staff report at a council meeting when you've completed that study. Be very, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Brian?
So the next category is information technology. First up is the digital radio system. And I guess I apologize, this slide says six years, but it's actually funded over four years. So I know we were changing through as we built out the budget. So if people can make that adjustment and we will, we'll adjust it on the PowerPoint going forward. It should be four years, not six years. The enterprise resource system, we'd ultimately be looking to fund it over a three-year period. It's not all in one year hit to to the budget. The IT evergreening is a component that we we fund every, every year. And then there's the video surveillance that we've been building out. And we look forward to later this fall, going into the winter, doing a show and tell and letting council see the the power of some of these video monitors that will be installed in different locations throughout the city. So you can see that the funding model going forward, capital levy, and then part of it comes over the next two years from future capital levies. Some of it comes from reserves and some of it's from the rate budget and some of it's from future rate budgets. So we try to itemize that for council and again, all the the written details on C point one to C point four. Happy to take any questions on those four projects.
Anything on these? Counselor Baggan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Here we go. C4, Mr. Bowles, the video surveillance program says these additional funds are to support the ongoing initiative. So I take it these are, these are additional funds. What is the other funds?
Bowles?
Yeah, through the mayor to the councillor and council. Two years ago, we started a project putting about $75,000 aside every year. We've spent almost $10,000 in the process of identifying the legal documents, the public policy documents that we're getting ready to be able to come back to and and show council what the, I think what the availability is with respect to the video surveillance documents or video surveillance technology going forward is. So it's not a placeholder because we started this a couple of years ago. We, we did, if council remember, I think last year, we tried an op, we tried to put one up at HH Noel. There was a lot of questions from the public with respect to how that went and the signage. So we went back through and we updated some policies. We're updating some signage. And our test locations are going to be at the beach and at HH Noel and a couple of road ends where we know we have garbage issues. So once those get set up, we will be looking to show council like what that is and then look at the next steps to where where these cameras can go to help the city going forward.
Counselor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you, we have about $60,000 sitting there that this is going to complement?
Through the mayor to the councillor, it's, it's probably closer to like 130,000, 140,000 dollars. Installing these cameras will be quite a significant upfront cost. And then the, there will be some sort of ongoing operational cost. It's the same as when we have to upgrade cameras around the buildings in the city, et cetera. It's the same process. We just, instead of putting it in the evergreen, we break it out because we know this is a very new initiative and this was something that actually got started by the previous council. They were very interested in building this out. We have had a couple of false starts because suppliers have said that they could produce or do the product and they've, they haven't been able to. We brought council to see some of it and then their technology failed. We do believe we have one and we know that some councillors have already gotten to see some of the technology at a couple of different events they've been at. So we are very hopeful that this next test is going to be exactly what council wants.
Counselor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm good.
Thank you. Any further questions? Counselor Borger.
Through your worship. Is it okay if we, if I go back one more to the fleet replacement?
No, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Oh, go ahead. Go ahead.
Okay. Through, through you to, I suppose, maybe Steve, I guess. When we, or to your Director Bowles, when we go through that replacement, it, we always say it's, it's at the end of its useful life, but after its useful life, we just, we sell it, right? Where does that revenue, I suppose, go or where is it shown in the budget? And does that go to replacing the capital, to the, sorry, replacing the fleet?
Through the mayor to the councillor, council's actually approved a capital asset policy. So when we do sell something, it actually goes back into the capital budget and it goes into the capital over short. So that way it's used to fund a future project that may be over or under budget. So we don't actually budget for that sale of the property. We just put the dollars and I can show you in the, in the levy budget, like actually where they hit. And then they get transferred into, I shouldn't say the levy, but into the accounts of the city and how they get transferred into the city's over short. But we do have a policy that says that's where the funds go.
Okay. So is it like a bonus to us, I suppose?
Through the mayor to council, I guess you could view it as that. It becomes additional funds to help fund the capital budget.
Yeah, because until you sell it, you don't know what the number.
Yeah, because until you sell it, you don't know what the number is, right? So, yeah, definitely. Anything further? Go ahead.
This next one is, council's very well aware of some of the industrial projects that are going on. And a little blurry our map here, or maybe it's not on the computer screens. But there are some industrial properties that are being prepared to be able to go to market and help grow, grow the cities and the industrial lands. These funds are internally financed, meaning that we're borrowing against reserves and when we sell the property, we'll get the funds back. I don't know if there's any questions on this project. I know our manager of strategic planning has been working on these projects and trying to keep council informed as they go forward.
Questions? Next.
Some park projects.
Oh.
Apologize.
Brian, thank you, Mr. Mayor, just on that, do you have any idea what that $300,000 is as a percentage of what the overall land development budget needs to be to complete our lands? I know that might be a bit difficult depending on whether one person takes a whole bunch of lots and there's, and there's one, or there's one larger lot and only one lateral versus there's 12 one acre lots. But is, is there sort of an overall, but I'm just interested in this overall number that we need to face and to be, to be ready for it. Because obviously this money immediately leverages construction, jobs, taxes. And so I'd, I'd like to look at it in a little broader perspective, if you have it.
Brian, so with regards to that, I, I think we can go to Steve to give us a, a good guesstimate that they've worked on with regards to this area. So just looking at the map that's on the screen now, guys, just so you know, the mustard area is land controlled by Transport Canada and the St. Lawrence Seaway Authority. The dark blue property is our land on Prospect Drive, which is formerly Ramey Road. So it's on both sides there, so the dark blue. The light blue is actually provincially owned property by the Ministry of Transport that we've actually spoken to them about. One is bringing a new road into the new industrial subdivision because the current entrance is on a curve, on a hill. It's dangerous, so we know we need to move it. So we're in conversation with the province with regards to that. But we're also in conversation with the province concerning those lands and, and how we can partner with the province or either take over those lands and see what is developable on them. Because they're, they're just sitting there, they're all part of the employment lands in the 140 corridor. But I know Steve and his crew have been working on the cross, the new cross canal corridor. That will bring services up Barrick Road, under the canal, up to second concession. Because the current crossing is from 1965, so the region's been working on it a number of years. We've actually been able to speed them up with our meetings. So Steve, can you give council an idea of, once that comes across the canal and in looking at our properties or going to our properties that we currently own, basically in the dark blue, up to the dark blue, where, you know, basically to third concession, a guesstimate cost?
For servicing, your mayor?
Pardon?
For servicing?
Yes, for servicing. So I think that's where you're going, right, Counselor?
Yeah, and, and even maybe broader than that, and I'm glad you brought those other things in because I would never have thought of that, that land that is even beyond that, the once Nyon land. And, and so my concern is, you know, if, if area at the top develops first, you need to run services by the area that isn't going to be developed. And to that end, you're, you're building infrastructure to get to something that might have been phase four of this. And to roll that all together, is this better to be a borrowing opportunity?
Yeah, I think, I think we should let Steve kind of give us an idea of, of the land that we own that we want to service regardless right away. And then as we go north to the city, to the, to the Nyon property, if that is ever developed, and what the additional cost would be. I think, Steve, we do have kind of some numbers on that.
Your worship, we have, we're currently looking at those numbers right now. So we actually have a consultant that's on retainer right now that's looking at some servicing plans. So what we've planned on doing so far is, I believe council's already had an, he said employment land reports come back in the past, quite some years ago. And we're taking those designs and refreshing them to today's standard to make sure that they're going to accommodate our goals at this, at this time. So right now we don't have the exact numbers with us, but we do, are working towards the plan to actually get all the infrastructure in place. Counselor Blue knows correctly, we have to end up staging this accordingly. Even when we're talking about infrastructure, we don't want to bring too much water all at once. We don't want to take too much sanitary all at once. We're going to have to plan to stage it accordingly so that the infrastructure is adequate for how we grow. So it is, it is a bit of a process to get to what we want to do. And then we start phasing it accordingly and bringing it online accordingly as well.
And I know council, like, these discussions are happening and, but there are some tentative numbers. Like, we, we, we know council won't hold them in stone to you, Steve, but can you kind of give an idea of the dollars? Once our consultant is finished with us, it'll be pretty firm.
Yep.
But the numbers that we kind of tentatively have, if you can talk about going up Ramey and then maybe out as far as to the Well and Border kind of area.
Sure.
And what additional, because we do have some guidelines that we talked about with the region with that.
Yeah, there could be up to, I wouldn't be surprised if it hit up to about 14 million by the time we end up bringing water, sanitary. There's going to be storm infrastructure, there's going to be roadways. There's also going to need to be a pumping station that's also included as well, which would actually go to, directly to the treatment plant and would utilize that canal crossing as well too. So very preliminary figures, I was hoping not to advertise them right now, but that's a very, very high level as to what we would see for some of the site servicing right now, but we're still refining those numbers as well.
I'm glad this topic, thank you for adding this in, Mr. Mayor. I guess what I'm concerned about, $300,000 seems like an awfully low number when it comes to infrastructure. And if you've got to get to just point A at the beginning, you know, are we better off? Because the benefit's going to be to future generations and some of the cost is going to be recouped through, obviously, assessment and those kind of things. And so would it, would it not be better to look at borrowing a third of it? And then you have the cushion of having the money. It's going to take more than a year, you know, it's going, you've got to go to the region, you've got to get the bench approval from them. You know, is this better to be started with, with debt? Anybody?
Through, through the mayor to the counselor, I just want to be very clear that this project isn't about putting in water or wastewater or storm. This project is just about preparing either through study, environmental, et cetera, the, those lands that we own, so we can resell them. Our Director of Public Works and myself, working with other agencies, are going to have to come back with reports. And you're going to see actually on my, you know, looking forward slides at the very end, where we will have to come back and talk about coming across the canal, which council has talked about. And servicing with moving right up, you know, into these lands and, and the grants that are potential. And I know there is a report that went to council recently and we do have some good news to share on one of them, but we just can't share it yet because there's a process. So there, there is a lot more to do with respect to servicing this land. This is really about just the land itself and making sure all the Is are dotted and Ts are crossed. So as we bring the servicing reports forward, we're ready to sell that piece of land. And the problem is with debt financing, you have to debt finance an asset that you're going to have for a long period of time. We have this asset that we're preparing to sell. So it is recommended from staff perspective that we would internally borrow this from the reserves. We ultimately pay the funds back to the reserves. We don't want to leave the reserve short changed. So we will, with the profit from the resale, we're going to put that money plus interest back into the reserves.
Thank you, just answered the question.
Yeah, and I think just to take it further, Counselor, is the fact that this discussion that you're having today will really come forward next year on, on based on what's moving forward within the city and our discussions with both the province and the federal government. We'll be having that exact same conversation next year. And I think it is, it will be more in tune for next year as opposed to this year. I think we're really setting the table this year and next year we'll be able to serve the meal. Thanks, Steve.
Through your worship, Director Bowles made a great point there about the tunnel crossing. And I just wanted to add too, that 14 million would be above the tunnel crossing itself with the region. And the region has put very, very high conceptual costs together that would be close to about 40 million. But we would only have a portion of that that would be rated based on the size of the infrastructure too. So I don't want that to scare council too much as it would be a size based on the infrastructure we have to bring across. But just wanted to let you know that there were some additional costs above that site servicing itself I was discussing.
Yeah, the other thing that we've discussed with the region and, and other partners with regards to that project, we have brought others to the table that are non-governmental. So they're very interested and I think some of them have indicated they will be part of that project, so there'll be a cost sharing with them. So instead of two entities being the region and us taking that project on, we've been able to bring other partners to the table to help alleviate costs for a repair.
Ryan.
As we transition to the next, another funding source will be development charges for those types of pipes that come across the canal. For parks, Tennessee gates is, is one of the main projects which I put forward on the earlier slide. Well, staff put forward and I listed four of them on the other side. Road ends, and again, that was a placeholder with a report coming. Waterfront, pedestrian, walking lights. At the marina, we do have to do some work with respect to a couple of the lights up and around the marina. And we're able to use some funding for that. So total dollar figures is 440,000 dollars, majority I think coming from the levy for these projects. I don't know, two of them we already kind of discussed in the highlights. I don't know if there's any questions with respect to these park ones.
Counselor Aquilina.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Brian. A few residents were asking about the road ends and that the placeholder. Do you have an estimated timeframe of when you might be bringing that back to council?
Steve?
Yes, through your worship, so right now we're working through an operations and maintenance manual for the, for the road ends themselves. We do have some stipulations from the ministry that we're going to have to abide by. So those are our hard goals that we're going to have to meet when we bring a presentation to council to outline some options for the, for the future of those areas. So we're working on that right now, we're just finishing it up. We are anticipating to bring that this year so that everything will be in place. And we'll, hopefully we'll have some nice, beautiful areas next year for when spring and summer hit. So we are anticipating to bring that forth to council for consideration this year.
Counselor.
Like Novemberish, like, like you gotta.
That would be appropriate, yes.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Baggett.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Counselor Aquilina had my first question. My second question, I guess, I don't know who goes to, we'll figure it out. The waterfront pedestrian walkway lighting, because it does, does that meet ESA standards? Does that just mean it's not grandfathered in or because we need a new light, it's got to be a different standard?
Steve?
Yeah, through you, your worship to Counselor Baggett. So we've done some inspections there and as you'll note, if you do go out there, there are some poles. When you actually look at the poles themselves, there'll be some raw at the bottom of them, right at where the grass is actually meeting the ground. Over the years, there has been attempts to try to reconnect the two pieces of steel through welding them together. So at this time, we're, we're recommending that it's about time to be replaced rather than continually trying to put a fix on those areas.
Counselor.
No problem, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Borger.
Through your worship to either Director Bowles or maybe probably Steve, the Tennessee Avenue gates. Being on the Heritage Committee, we had the opportunity to review the consultant's report on that and provide recommendation. I believe there were several different options and, and which came with various amounts of money in order to replace and depending on what, how far we went. I'm just wondering, is this going to be also another type of placeholder item that comes to council? Because I don't recall that report, that consultant's report coming before council and having a discussion on that.
Steve?
Yes, so you're correct, we haven't brought that to council. We were presenting it within this, within the budget approval to move forward with it. If council did want a few more details, it's not a big issue to bring our information report to council just to let you know what we're doing, why we're moving forward with it. So that's definitely an option that we could move forward with.
Through you, I, I think it would be helpful for council to see the different options that are available and how far we want to go. Like $300,000 on a gate is, is quite extensive. So I think it would be healthy to see, have council review it.
Love to have my great grandfather's receipt book and see what he paid when he built those. That's who built them. Yeah, my grandfather worked on that project, yeah. Long time ago. Next, Brian.
Sure. The next category is, is cemeteries and as council's, I think is aware, we may be looking at, you know, working with or taking on additional cemeteries going forward. So Public Works and Finance has done a significant work to figure out what like a long-term capital budget for the cemeteries needs to be. We came up with 128,000. This year, what we're really identifying is we need to do some infrastructure improvements at overhaul. You can go and we're happy to tour council through what we have out there right now. It is in pretty rough shape. And then our goal is to be able to put these funds, the remaining, into the reserve. And as what we've noted on the slide is, because I think it's important, you can't just put money into reserve, you have to have a purpose while you're putting it into a reserve. And we're looking at building up a plan for tackling some of the headstones. Steve was nice enough to walk me around it the other day and I think we, there's a, we're happy to take people out and take a look at that. But there is significant, significant work to do, I think, with respect to some of the headstones out at that cemetery. And I assume at some that we'll end up potentially assuming at some point in time. So we recommend to council that we start and we create a budget line so that way on a go-forward basis, we can create a regular program that we can maintain the cemetery to a standard that I think people that are there and their families that are associated with would be appreciative and respectful for it.
Counselor Burnham.
I guess the only thing that struck me about this, which says somebody did their homework, is the oddity of the number. 128,100 dollars, so it just strikes me as, is, is that the cost of someone else doing it at consulting? Is that, is that the firm price as opposed to placeholders, et cetera, et cetera?
So through the mayor to the counselor and our Director of Public Works can help me out. But our calculation was going to be for multiple years of this, that it is quite expensive to do it. Our, our thought actually is to build up the reserve a bit and then do a bigger block because the economy, the scale of doing many at once will be a lot cheaper going forward. I don't know if Director Public Works wants to correct me or help me out here.
Through you, your worship to council, so Director Bowles is absolutely correct. We are looking to phase in some of the headstone repairs. There's quite a few that need to be taken and there's also a couple that are on angles that, that also need to be repaired too. So we would strategically go through the cemetery and prioritize specific headstones. Would also look at different, an actual maintenance area that would be completed similar to what's at the Valley Health and Wellness Center at this time. If you drive by or go out there, I'd be more than willing to drive you out there and take a look at the facility as it sits right now. It's not pretty and not very functional. So we do want to have a proper site out there to provide a, a perfect service to, to anywhere else that have to happen.
Steve, for council's information and, and I don't, because I don't think every council, council knows this, I didn't know until you guys told me. But plus for the public that are watching, can you give us the rule, the provincial rule on headstones on? Because technically we take ownership after X amount of years, correct? Can you give council and the public an idea of what's?
Yes.
That rule of, that rule is?
Yeah, so we, we are responsible for maintaining those headstones. So there's certain guidelines and standards that you want to meet. So sometimes you want to be able to have 30 square pounds of pressure that go onto a headstone to make sure that they're not going to fall over. If a child's in the cemetery and pushes it over, if they're on a certain angle, we want to maintain them, put them back up. If they're on a certain angle, we want to maintain them, put them back up. But it is the municipality's responsibility to do that. In some cases, some cemeteries will actually take the older soapstone headstones, and they'll actually lay them on the ground to preserve the writing for future cases. In other cases, they'll be fully restored in the proper manner with dabbles. So there's a couple of different standards to follow, but we are responsible, and we do have to, we have an obligation to maintain them.
Great, thanks. Just for those that didn't know, I thought if I bought my parents' headstone, it was my responsibility for everybody's. It goes back to whatever municipality you're in, at a point. Counselor Bruno?
So just back to the odd number. So basically, am I correct in saying that you'll drain the reserve of the fifty-three thousand, one hundred, and add money to the levy to make one twenty-eight, one hundred?
Right?
Yeah, through the mayor to the counselor, that one twenty-eight is going to be required in perpetuity, growing at the five percent to maintain the headstones and the rest of the infrastructure at the current overhaul cemetery, and we'll have to grow as we add cemeteries going forward to maintain those headstones. It actually goes back to the conversation we had at last budget, and we'll reopen, I guess, in a month at this budget. It's what, what is the cost of burial, and what's the cost of a plot? Because our perpetual reserve is just, I think, south of four hundred thousand dollars roughly, but it would need to be somewhere in the neighborhood of, I'm going to say twenty or times that, to be able to fully, twenty times plus that, to be able to fully maintain this. So it's unfortunate, because when we take over cemeteries, oftentimes, we get the responsibility as a city, and the taxpayers have, and ultimately have the responsibility for it, but we don't have the reserves or the perpetual fund that should have paid for all this, because really, this should have been paid for by when somebody bought a plot. X amount should have been set aside into the perpetual fund, and those funds should have been used to maintain them forever. And that's where we're kind of, it's an oddity, because there is no perpetual fund when there should be. And so now, we as a city have the obligation, as the Director of Public Works and the mayor pointed out, to maintain them.
And just further to that, Counselor, because on us, our learning curve on this has been unbelievable here at City Hall. There are countries out there that when you bury a family member, they only stay in the ground for X amount of years. Then they're removed, and they're cremated. That's the law. And then, the municipality or the cemetery, whoever owns it, gets to resell that plot. And I think that's probably a reason why, is that that carries on the perpetual maintenance of that cemetery, because once somebody passes away, and they're buried, and a headstone's put there, that's the end of it. There's no more, it's not like a house where it's continually taxed as it's resold and resold and then resold. There's one payment, and that's, that's hit forever. So, you know, it's a, it's a, it's a cost the taxpayer has to pay for across municipality with all cemeteries that we take control of.
Maybe this can be the last on cemeteries, but I guess what I don't, when I, when I look at there in the words you said about repairing, so I get it that you inherit cemeteries that have been abandoned, you have one that's active, and perpetual care funds in the reserve don't generate enough money to sustain the cemeteries. But this is capital funding, and so some of the maintaining is the ongoing mowing of grass at a cemetery that's no longer in use. And yes, there's some headstones that fall over. So this isn't really then the whole number, because some of perpetual care is in the operating budget, and what you're saying is that we have to add one twenty-eight. We virtually never had the right number, so we're playing catch-up, plus that's going to go up each year, just to keep pace with inflation. So there is a component in the operating budget that's over and above this, correct?
Yeah, through the mayor to the counselor, you are correct. The parks budget right now absorbs, it's built into the parks budget, it's not necessarily pulled out, but it, they absorb all the lawn cutting. They do tree planting out there, flowers, everything is, it's already built into the operating budget of the levy. Our recovery right now on revenue is maybe, I can bring it back with the operating budget discussion, but between this capital cost, because when we do these, these things are supposed to be, these upgrades will last thirty, forty, fifty years, so we have them here. But this, plus the operating, we're probably short like seventy percent of the, of the cost, even with the fee structure we have, even with the proposed fee structure that we would put forward. So it's, it's a big cost to the levy to maintain these going forward, but I'd put the council to advise us any other, any other way.
So basically, I don't know, what is it, two hundred thousand is a percent on the levy, or is that close?
Through, well, I, through the mayor to the counselor, I, well, this, this cost here would be about half a percent on the levy, because just over, about two hundred and twenty thousand roughly, two hundred and thirty would be about one percent on the levy now, so you have about, this would be about half a percent on the levy.
Right, that's, because half of that, you've already got in the reserve, right? So next year, you need the full one twenty-eight, one hundred? Because up at the top, it says reserve transfer fifty-three, one.
So just through the mayor to the counselor, when we, when you take F1, and you take the reserve, and you add the two together, you get to one twenty-eight, one hundred.
Right, but that fifty-three is only available for year one?
For one, year one, and our, what we're suggesting, or we have in our forward forecast a couple slides ago, is that that capital levy is going to have to grow at five percent per year in perpetuity, to be able to maintain the cemeteries.
Right. I guess what I, so I'm correct, that's what, one twenty-eight, one hundred I'd get, next year will be one twenty-eight, one hundred, but the real impact on the levy is one twenty-eight, one hundred minus fifty-three, one for year one?
Well, the impact would be one twenty-eight, one hundred unless council adjusts it.
No, but some of that is this year being paid from the reserve, correct?
No, through the coun-
Maybe that's why I'm confused with the fifty-three, one.
Nothing's being paid for from the reserve.
Okay.
We would be putting the fifty-three into the reserve, so we can come back to council when Steve's ready with his plan to start fixing the headstones.
Okay. For the questions, Brian?
Planning, we have the one project in planning, we've talked a little bit about it in the highlights. It's the GIS project. It really comes down to mapping all of the projects, all of the roads, it's making all of our water, wastewater, storms, easements, et cetera of the city. We've done the studies, council's supported staff. I think council's had kind of a, an early view, an early look. The Public Works Department has invited many counselors in to see that. I, my understanding is council's quite excited about where it's going. We have to take it the rest of the way there. When we do that, we'll also be able to, at the end of this project, turn on the outward looking in, so that way the public can see it. So if somebody wants to do a development, or somebody wants to do something around their house, they'd be able to see it. They could go online and see all the building permits in the city, and see where they are, see where all the capital projects are going on in the city. It'll be a whole new way of open data and transparency, once we get through this project.
Counselor Baguio.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you. I am happy to see this, I just don't know the capability of it, like, it looks like we're getting a good state-of-the-art program, so it would tell me if I lived on Homewood Avenue, it would tell me where, exactly where the storm sewer is, where the water, where the sewer line is, what type of line the water line is, eventually through, I guess there's other data input you have to put into it, like the age of the pipe that's existing in the ground already. Would that have the capability of having all that in there?
So through the mayor to the counselor, I'm going to say yes, and then it really comes down to a question of, through work with council and Public Works, what do we want to make public? So it's going to have the ability to, and then it's, how does council want to roll it out, and what information do you want to roll out? It's ultimately council's decision, but this will have the ability to take our data and make it public. And then that can be a conversation as we work through this project, talk to council and get input. This next area is, I think, one of the largest areas of our capital budget. We've been really growing the annual roads program budget. I think, I know when I got here, it was around half a million dollars, and now we're approaching one point five. I think Public Works, they've kind of identified some of the areas that they're looking at right now with respect to roads. Historically, we've just taken a, a dollar figure, and then we came back to council about six months later, and we said the roads we thought were being prioritized. Right now, based on the asset management and some of the mapping data that they've been doing, these are the road areas they'd be looking to prioritize, and they'd look for councils like in other years, input in the coming months to finalize those roads. The annual sidewalk program, one of the projects that we would prioritize is a sidewalk, and we'd be, we're recommending here between, or along John Street, between Clark and Wellington, as you go to between Lockview Park and Valley Health and Wellness Center. As council's aware, there will be a park there, there's, staff are moving forward. There was some issues with respect to the land and ownership of a couple strips there, and that is just about worked out, so then we can start talking about actually getting that park in the ground, which we do have funding from Valet, and funding that the city has set aside. So ultimately, it's a very interesting spot to connect our largest sports area with Lockview Park, and I think there has been presentations at council seen it. The goal is with Lockview Park, one of them is to take the walkway through Lockview Park, and ultimately connect it across the bridge to Lock Eight. So that way, you, the whole city gets connected to the Valley Health and Wellness, right through that area. The next one was the Osom and Culver structure replacement. It was noted as one of the highlights, and Public Works can get into the process to which that will do. Guardrails are also in there, and we are recommending, talking internally, I think the fire chief has also recommended it, the new hydrant on second concession going forward. So I know, I kind of outlined where the funding for all these projects would come from, about one point seven million will come from grants. So I put to the mayor, if there's any questions.
Chief, just on the second concession hydrant, can you give us a quick overview of what that's all about?
Through the mayor to council, high level is that main was put in to supply Pintys with municipal water supply. At that time, under the contract, there was no provisions for hydrants out in the rural area, which would add a significant time-saving to us when we're in the rural area. So that was identified as, as an area that we could help service our friends out in Ward Four.
So would that, would hydrants be placed between one forty and towards the end of that line, or is it only one hydrant?
We're just looking at one hydrant, and it'll be down by the Pinty parking lot, right at that entrance. Just looking at time ways back to the Elizabeth filling station, I don't see that there's a huge benefit in multiple hydrants along that stretch, when you, when you look at the cost.
Okay, so, but does Pintys have hydrants now, from that water main when they originally put it in?
Through the mayor to council.
On their property, I'm talking?
On, on their property, they actually have a, a container that, like a reservoir that we can actually attach to that's gravity-fed back to us.
For their-
In the back.
Yeah, in case there's a fire at their facility. This would allow us to refill for fires with regards to our, not our property, but our residents' property within-
The Ward Four area, yeah.
Okay. Questions for the Ward Four council on that?
Good idea.
Counselor Aquilina, anything? Counselor Bruno?
Through you to the chief, did I hear you say, so this is for, that line was originally paid for, I think, by the poultry, then turned over to us? So is this, did you say one hydrant?
Through the mayor to council, I couldn't tell you who paid for that water main, and I won't even try, but that is the price for one water main due to the size. When we priced it a few years ago, there's, the city at that time didn't have the capacity to tap.
I'm sorry, you just said one water main. I thought you were placing a hydrant on top of an existing water main.
Yes, that's what we're doing.
So that's the cost to put one hydrant in?
That's at that time, when we priced it a couple of years ago, with the past director, that's what we were told.
Wow.
But this would be not necessarily for fighting fires, but more for filling trucks very quickly?
That's filling trucks.
It may be a little bit larger than what you would see normally out in front of your house, kind of thing? Like, would it be able to move more capacity on that main than what a normal hydrant may do?
Through the mayor to council, we are limited to whatever that water main will supply, correct? But we identified that areas, as we've got an area to turn trucks around, but we try to limit how much we back vehicles up, so we can go in that parking lot, whip around, and, you know, turn around and be heading the right way.
Probably made so that they don't break down, that's, yeah. Brian?
The next area is the storm sewer. We are looking, the storm sewer does help pay part of the enterprise resource plan, a very small component of it. The development and optimization of GIS, because it's a very small component, but they do use it, it's a very big part of it. The majority of the storm sewer is actually going into the reserve, because it's the requirement to go to the Demafor grant, and until we know the outcome of that, we thought it was easier for everybody to understand, we're just going to put it in the reserve, and then we'll come back to council, once that all gets approved.
Steve, that's been fixed? That photograph? Not the photograph's been fixed, the issue within the photograph's been fixed, I assume.
One hundred percent it has.
Just to make sure, yeah, so that's the, that's the last time you'll see that photograph on that storm drain.
It's intended to represent some of the, the condition of much of our storm sewer system across the, across the city.
Counselor?
Through, where was that photo taken?
Through you, your worship, it was on Clarence Street in the downtown core.
Okay, that's my finger.
Near the rail line. Thanks, Steve.
The next is perhaps, is by far the largest project that we're putting forward, the wastewater project. So there is some fleet replacement for wastewater. Wastewater does contribute some funds, a small portion, to the enterprise resource planning and to the GIS, but the main component is really to look at the wastewater relining. So the wastewater relining, it's a ten million dollar project, it's going to happen over a couple of years. So the way we've budgeted for it is to have the funds to be able to pay for the debt, and then, as the project progresses, we have to, we would come back to council, we have to go through a bylaw process, we have to tell you where we are on the project, we have to tell you how much debt we need, you approve it, it goes to the region, the region would then go through their process, approve it at their council, we'd then hear back on what the interest rates would be. We don't get to negotiate the interest rate, it is whatever it is at that point in time, and then we bring that back, we tell council, and we may end up doing it in two or three components, because the project will happen over three years. Now, what will happen is, because we're budgeting to pay for the debt, so that way we know we have the funds, as, like, as the project progresses, if, if we don't really need to issue the debt next year, we don't have to issue to the end of next year, or sometime the following year, we'll take that down payment, or that debt payment, and we'll reduce the amount of debt we have to issue. That way, we can issue less debt, and then we can do more projects later. So I know, having been around for a while at different councils and organizations, they often ask, well, if you budget for the debt payment today, and then you don't need it, what do you do with it? Well, we pay down the debt, so we issue even less debt, which means council can move forward with another project. And I think as council's aware, there's going to be a couple more projects coming forward with respect to storm sewer, to get the system to where it needs to be. And then the last component is a reserve transfer, because wastewater is a big component of the Demafor grant as well, so we have to fund that, and we're recommending that these reserve funds, plus the reserve funds we have, will be able to pay for our, our contribution for that grant. I don't know if there's any questions with respect to wastewater, I know it's a big number.
Counselor Baguio?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you, I have to apologize, I should have asked this question a long time ago, about the, the line- About the lining of the piping and I asked the director how long this technology has been in effect in about 15, 20 years. So I asked him, well, it's been in effect for 15, 20 years, how do we know it's going to last 75 years when it's in a pipe? So I'll let him answer that one.
Steve?
Yeah, through your worship, so cured in place, pipelining's been in place for probably since the 70s or 80s and it's evolved over time, so we've seen different alternatives from hot water to steam and more recently, what we'll see more than likely on this contract will be UV curing. So typically, the longevity of the pipe is over 50 to 60 years and that's mostly based off of the material composition and the testing that happens on the material as well once it's cured in place.
Counselor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I do apologize when I asked that question earlier.
That's okay. That's on this one, so.
So, other more questions on that, Mayor, before I go to the next slide, another comment just to note is, we, we do anticipate that as we do one-third of the city, we will find, and I think people that are watching this and I know council is aware, we'll probably find a new issue. And one of the new issues we may find along the way is laterals between houses and our pipes, because if our pipes start to get really good, then we have to take a look at, you know, where else there may be I and I, so there will be more, this will be an iterative process, this is not going to be a one project and done. Just setting that up for a director of Public Works that will have to give regular updates and come back to see how this progresses.
Steve?
So that's, that's a great tee up, Brian, and basically what I wanted to just kind of reiterate is this is a multi-pronged approach to combating some of the inflow and infiltration issues that the municipality has. So although we're first starting with the gravity sanitary sewers, we do plan to move into sanitary laterals as we start conducting some of this work. So as we're doing this lining and construction work on the sanitary sewers, we're planning to do some investigation on the actual laterals themselves. From there, we'll end up proposing some options to council about what to do on the lateral side and then we'll also be looking at the storm sewers too to see how we can get the inflow away from the sanitary sewers by either reconstructing storm sewers or building new storm sewers. So I just want to let council know, this is a multi-pronged approach that we're going to be tackling from multiple directions, but this is the first start and with council support, I think it's a, it's a very strong, strong push toward the right direction.
Counselor?
Steve, if I can just squeeze this question in on this, this material, the GIS that we talked about earlier, so that's going to grab all our data. And so, so let's say you're on, I don't know, Steel Street and you do that reline and then you do the lateral that's ours to the public, private line. Is your system going to let you know if Mr. and Mrs. Smith replaced their lateral so that you don't, I mean, there might be a program where you want to do all the way to the house. Is our GIS going to know from building permits and everything like that, what's been done on the private side? So for example, these people taking advantage of our lateral program and people in the past that went to get a building permit, does that all get inputted to save us money from not redoing a line that's been redone 10 years ago?
Steve?
Yeah, through your worship, that's, that's a great point, that's exactly what we're striving for right now. We're doing a lot of work, the entire team at Public Works is doing a lot of work from the operations side to the planning side to gather this kind of information, what we have to date, put it into a GIS system so that we can actually make appropriate decisions and that's what we're going to keep moving with. We're going to keep documenting what we do, every lateral that gets replaced, it needs to be documented so that we can make appropriate decisions in the future. So we're 100% running that route.
Even the private system?
Correct.
Okay. All right.
Next one, water. We do have a number of water projects, it follows the same model as wastewater. We've identified the fleet, the enterprise, the GIS helping contribute, small components. And then the water project that we have with respect to Davis, West, Homewood, Berkeley, that continues going forward, so that's year three of five for putting that and that was a, remember, council member, we put forward grant application and that total project's valued at $5 million. So this is year three of five. And then just for clarity, because I know I was, wasn't, maybe wasn't clear before, but when I write, when we write reserve transfer there, that's because we're putting those funds into the reserve. The water reserve with that reserve transfer will be over a million dollars. That all won't be needed for the Demafor grant because the most of it is on wastewater and water. We will be looking at future projects to bring back to council because I think there's a lot of counselors that know the saying, every day is budget day, as you go through the course of a year in a municipal environment. And we know that as the data and as Steve's team continues to work on the GIS and identifying projects, they'll bring some forward to council. I can tell you right now, as we work on the operating budget and the trimester two data, we do see and we anticipate that our water loss ratio is actually getting worse right now. So we do anticipate that as we go forward, there will be, and what's caused that, we're looking into, so there may be some projects that come out of that. So when we put the dollars into that reserve, there will be future projects that are going to come back to try to tackle what we're seeing now with some uptick in our water loss right now. I don't know if there's any questions on water projects?
Counselor, go ahead.
The library, the library has a number of projects going forward, existing stairway replacement, exterior door, skylight, UV auditorium floor, all of these were selected based on the building condition assessment work that was done with respect to the library. We have done a long-term calculation that if we look at the long-term life of the library, we need to be putting away $168,000 a year. This budget proposes to do that and the difference that's not needed right now for projects, because some projects we said are, we don't need to do right away, we're recommending set aside in a reserve. We have been working with the library on this, but we do, just to highlight to council, we do anticipate that there will be a separate capital reserve for the library maintained on the city's books because the city owns the library. So the city will, will hold the funds and then working with the library board and Public Works, they'll continue to come back with, like any capital project and, and talk to the city. Really, there'll be no difference to council's approval process because you've always had the approval process when it comes to capital projects at the library. It's just where the reserve sits. The reserve will actually sit on the city's books proper instead of the library's books proper.
Counselor?
Through you to Mr. Bull, so if I'm understanding this right, it's always been a city building, but the capital requests have come, what, solely from the library or joint? So that's question one. Question two, so I don't know if this is a capital project, but if they need equipment at the library, that will be in a library request, will they have a capital fund for that? And then the building will be solely ours, not under the library, but in consultation with them and our asset people? So they still have a capital reserve for non-building?
All right.
Through the mayor, to the counselor and council, they'll, they'll be able to request what they need and if it's not for the facility, but they need some sort of shelving idea or, or something along that lines, they would have to include that in their budget request to, to council going forward. They do have a budget for collections, which the director of Library Services is meticulous on, I can say, so that will, that will continue in the operating budget as it, as it has in past years.
Okay, questions? Brian?
Next projects, Roson and Museum. Again, we're still in the process of doing the building condition assessment documents with respect to Roson, but what we do know is that when you look at the library, then you take the size of Roson, the museum, the number is going to need to be larger, it may end up being larger than what we're proposing here on a go-forward basis. But we have worked with Roson and their committees, a board has been able to put forward a number of projects, the projects are highlighted and I know our Director of Museum and Cultural Services is here if there's any questions as well as Public Works, because those projects are decided in consultation with one another to be able to move forward. So you can see everything ranging from the archives to the resource center, we've broken it up to museum and by the building, Roson, and for each of the, each of these buildings, we've identified the different projects with each on our working papers between L Point One and L Point Six. I think though, the largest ones are happening at Roson, including an accessible ramp, which just to highlight to council, I think we budgeted for $90,000 right now, but we are and I believe that Roson is looking at grants for that that may, because that project may be more than $90,000. So achieving grants might be able to help make that more affordable going forward.
Okay, Counselor Bruno?
The answer is, so this doesn't have to be rejigged, it's a city asset already, it's being done just like if it was the Arena Community Center, et cetera.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Baggot?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On Roson, I, I would love to see a business plan for this place. I don't have no idea what's been going on there the last year, I don't think nothing's, like whether we're ready to go to kitchen, we're ready to go here or there. I would like to see that come to council and for this request, it said $26,500 from the Roson reserves, I think the Roson reserves are pretty well half a million dollars. So why is only $26,000 coming out of that reserve?
Brian?
Through the mayor, to the counselor, I'll tackle it from a funding perspective. Our, our initial estimate is that the dollar figures for those buildings is going to be at least in the 258 range and when, that's what we were trying to set the, the opening budget to be able to talk about what Roson's going to need on a go-forward basis. So when we added up the projects that we knew we could tackle next year, the differential was the Roson reserve. Ultimately, what we're really looking at is over the coming years, the work that's going to be needed at Roson, and I can let Public Works speak better to this, is probably going to be significant. I understand there's still knob and tube wiring at the building and, and the likes. So I think we are going to be talking to the Roson, the Roson Board with respect to utilizing those reserves. We may be talking about a year or two between when they get used and that's something that we do in consultation with the board. The other thing we know is there was a report or a grant application that happened a couple of years ago, there was an original estimate to actually bring the building back to full life and it was almost $3 million. So I guess what I would just highlight to count to the counselor and council is, like, that reserve might be, look significant, but in the grand scheme of the amount of work that's probably needed between some of the infrastructure needs, the core infrastructure needs, as the building condition assessment comes back, we're going to see a significant need of investment. And to put it in context, for those that have like taken a look at, for example, the library's facility condition assessment, it almost rates the building in perfect condition, like a zero, like a zero in the rating is like perfect, whereas we anticipate when we finalize Roson and Museum, we aren't going to be close to that. So the dollar figures will be invested and those will be utilized, whether it be in the next six months or the coming year or two with the board and with the community as decisions are made with respect to Roson.
Counselor?
I guess to you, Mr. Mayor, did we ever change the PA system in that building? I know you have.
In this building?
Yes, in the banquet hall, or is this in this budget?
Madam Museum curator is here this evening. Stephanie, if you want to come up and give that answer?
Absolutely. Through the mayor to the counselor, the PA system is working perfectly in both rooms and we'd be happy to have you there to do a speech if you like. Project complete. Are there any other questions for me while I'm here?
No, I'm good, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
For Stephanie, right?
Yeah, through worship to Stephanie. The museum went through and did a master plan, correct? What, what were the results for Roson, just to kind of maybe help Counselor Baggot and sort of understand what the plan is for and how we?
Through your worship to Councilor Beauregard, yeah. So not only is there the five-year strategic plan, we also have a visioning for Roson document that engaged Friends of Roson, council and the community. We've also done strategic planning with Lighthouse Theater to make sure we're on par with moving forward in the next two years that we're all working towards the same goals. And one of the focuses, which you can see through our budget of the Friends of Roson and the, the museum board are just to improve the accessibility, get the community in there and continue to offer programming to everybody here so that they feel that that's their home as well. So that's what we've been working together with, with partnerships with both the Niagara Region as well as some of our indigenous Aboriginal youth have been there. We've embarked in our Francophone community, so we're really trying to expand our services through all of their groups throughout the city of Port Coburn, but also the region. And we've been having exhibit and open hours every month as well as programming throughout the summer and our Music on the Lawn series was quite popular too, to, almost everybody here stopped by for that. So we are revitalizing it and I think that the budget really speaks towards the fact that we know that we need to get some hardware improved because the programming's already going and we need to catch up.
Counselor Beauregard? Counselor Baggot?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you to Stephanie, the master plan and the five-year plan, is it available online?
Yes, it is. I, I believe it hasn't.
Where do I find it?
Yeah, how would I email, how would I email off council tomorrow morning? I'd be happy to have it.
Perfect.
Perfect, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
For the questions? Thanks, Stephanie.
Thank you.
Brian?
Well, I think I just got a couple slides here left, looking forward, just as we go forward, we've really worked out and we saw the earlier slide about funding requirements and how we think the funding model can grow if we stay kind of in some of those assumptions, which will allow Public Works to really tackle the linear assets. We are working and council's going to get to look at a nonlinear asset, capital asset management plan, which will include our parks and our facilities and our equipment. And then we're also working on the building condition assessments, which as we get through those, we will make it so that way council can, can see each of those building condition assessments, because those will be informing the capital budget going forward. And we are working on some updates to bring to council with respect to parks and rec master plan. There's a number of parks that we are looking at where we think there can be enhancements going forward and some changes. So we do look at rolling that out in components before the December period this year and then some more going into next year. And then this slide is, last year you might remember, I had like five projects that were kind of like they're going to come back at some point in time. And I can appreciate that we have a couple placeholders in here and I think council can appreciate sometimes you have to set funds aside because people have to make decisions and council will have to have more in-depth discussions down the road. But there are some other things going on in the city that I think council needs to be aware of, because there are some other big reports that are likely going to come your way coming forward. And one is, we've talked a lot about it, the Disaster Mitigation Adaptation Fund Grant, the Demafor Grant, if we get that or don't get that, that's going to have a lot of decisions on what council's going to go forward. We are working on the whole process with the MECP, the Ministry of the Environment with respect to dredging at Sugarloaf Marina. We do believe that that ministry approval is probably still going to take another year. When we wrote this slide, we thought we were going to get it in within the next three to nine months, but just to identify to council that just getting through the ministry requirements is probably going to take another year, so budgetary about dredging is, is still going to take longer to get back to council. There has been some individuals or the partner has brought forward at Sugarloaf Marina, the idea of putting forward a second deck. So there is a bit of a business case, grants model kind of being discussed. We've talked about it tonight, the well and canal crossing, that is something that council's going to be looking at going forward. We are looking at some environmental considerations on some projects, we'd be looking to come back to council going forward. Something new on the capital asset management side is going into this year end, we have to identify if we have environmental requirements to rehabilitate, i.e. in a facility or in, well, just in any asset we have, we have to, we have to value that. Public Works, I Uh, Public Works, I appreciate their partnership in trying to identify all that. But when we bring back the twenty-twenty-three statements next year, we will be talking about and providing council with a number of what the cleanup will be for maybe asbestos in a building that we may still have, uh, and that going forward. So we are gonna have to calculate that, it's a new requirement. Uh, we do think we can manage any additional consultants we may need to, to consult with as we go through it, through the operating budget. But if that becomes not possible, we'll come back and talk to council about that. There is, and, and I think, um, uh, on the council tour, we did walk around or we did do the tour around and we went down past Pleasant Beach and I think council saw, we are looking at, uh, the Pleasant Beach area and some retaining wall, uh, improvements. There is a waterfront development we are still continuing to work on. Um, we are looking at city-owned fire lanes with respect to, uh, getting the fire truck and that, uh, down some of them as well as, which is, I know has been brought up. There was a Tennessee Gates, but there's also those, uh, fire lane pillars, so we're looking at that. Um, as well as, we have been, some, uh, some individuals have brought forward to look at potentially entrances for the city as well as community on blooms. And recently, we did receive some information from, which isn't on this list yet, we did receive some information from some regulatory agencies with respect to hydro lines on, um, West Street. So I hate to give like the wall worry list, but we do have a capital budget and these are all things that we anticipate next year. Council is going to be reviewing projects on that will be funded in future capital budgets as we go forward. But I do think it's important that we put, as staff put in front of you as council, things that are gonna be coming forward next year and things we're gonna have to talk about and then find funding in twenty-five and, and going forward. Uh, on that, I just wanna say thank you and, uh, there is the recommendation, and again to reiterate, if, uh, council desires to approve the budget, uh, at the council meeting in October, uh, staff is, I think staff is perfectly fine with that. I think we can work that into our schedule, um, no problem. I don't know if schedules are anywhere.
So before I put the recommendation on the floor, further questions? I'm gonna start from my left and come across, Ron?
No.
Counselor Bruno?
It was gonna be about the recommendation for that project.
Yeah, when it's on the floor.
Thanks.
Counselor Baguette or anything? Counselor Beauregard, okay, perfect. So, we have, the committee of the whole recommend to council that Corporate Services Department Financial Services Division Report Number Two Zero Two Three Dash One Six Zero Subject Twenty Twenty Four Capital and Related Projects Budget Be Received. And the Twenty Twenty Four Capital and Related Project Budget, as outlined in Report Number Twenty Twenty Three Dash One Six Zero Be Approved. That the projects identified in the Twenty Twenty Four Capital and Related Projects Budget Be permitted to begin immediately where feasible. If I could have counselors Bruno and Baguette move that, uh, questions, Counselor Bruno.
Thank you, your worship. Going back to my earlier question about the timing, um, whilst we've been going through all of this, um, I was reminded, looking back, that we've been giving a two percent increase and this year is two-point-five, asked for a two-point-two-five. So in light of, um, of wanting to ensure that we may or may not have room based on the operating budget that we haven't gone through yet, um, there's, I, I wanna put a question to you, there's, is there the opportunity to put forward projects as we move through the presentation? Certainly, I'm, I'm happy to go ahead with all water, wastewater, stormwater projects in that gross amount of money. And I did notice there were some things like, um, in the G I S and planning, one of the notations there was to begin immediately. You may have Mr. Chapowski who needs all kinds of time to get two dump trucks. There's a side of me that wants to say that those things that are, would retard moving going forward, if we were to wait another month, then I'd be happy to vote on the balance that is necessary. Alternatively, but I don't know what that dollar figure is. Two percent has been a given going forward, the point-two-five is a new ask. I would consider holding back on the point-two-five until we get to the twenty-fourth. But I have no concept of what point-two-five is and which is, which is more timely, doing the projects that are necessary now and holding, and, and holding the rest back? Or point-two-five, which is greater?
Brian?
That's, that's a loaded question off the top of your head, but you gotta ask it.
Nope, through, through the mayor, it's, uh, to the counselor. Let me pull out my handy calculator here and, uh.
Is that a Texas instrument? That would've been nineteen-seventies high school, you weren't born then.
I'm actually surprised he's using the calculator.
So through the mayor to the counselor, the, the point-two-five is about fifty-eight thousand dollars, I would identify on an eleven-million-dollar budget. Sorry.
We could say the same thing about the operating budget. The reality is, is, it's, the reality is, it's still, um, money that's now gonna be embedded in the levy and you may need, or I may need, or council may need that quarter of a point later on based on what you're doing. Frankly, I prefer to do just the ones you need for the sake of four weeks. If they're not gonna make a difference, don't stop the water wastewater, don't stop the two dump trucks, don't stop the G I S, but I would think the other could wait for one month.
So, so Brian, I think what I'm getting from council is, you're, you're getting a recommendation to move forward. You're not spending the eleven million in four weeks. So obviously, if we're only talking less than sixty thousand dollars, I'm sure if you can spend the eleven million in four weeks, you just keep fifty-six, or sixty thousand dollars in your back pocket so that after the twenty-fourth, if it needs to be put into somewhere else, it can be. Uh, but it, does four weeks really make a difference or do we just bring this forth onto the twenty-fourth of October and let you guys move forward? Like, is, is there anything that's imperative that, that quite frankly, Steve and his staff need to move forward with? And some of the things that are going along in City Hall? Do they need to start within the four weeks or is that, could that stay, stay? Or could that wait till the twenty-fourth?
Yeah, so, um, well, obviously, uh, projects can wait over a period of time if be needed. Uh, one project that I will point out is our project that we're working with Niagara Falls, they are in a very tight timeline. They would need, they would really prefer us to know if we're in or not, like for funding for that, for the September, uh, council meeting. Many of the other ones are gonna take a time to, to ramp up. I, I would suggest to council that if, if, if the sticky point or the concern might be the sixty thousand, council could approve the budget and we can look at alternate funding scenarios when we come back with the operating for the sixty if council decides that it, it needs it. Picking the specific projects that we need, uh, we could, I, I, I think we could, like, we, for the most part, we can make it work.
Yeah, so may I suggest that you bring this forward on the twenty-sixth of September?
Yes.
Approval, and, and you could actually, in your recommendation, Brian, actually put the two percent because I think council here seems to, what I'm seeing is agreeing with it. The other point-two-five or approximately sixty thousand can be added to the twenty-fourth and, and then approved there that, uh, you kinda do it in two parts. Just so that there are things that, that staff can get moving on. Quite frankly, it's probably a pittance of what that total budget is between that, those four weeks, but there are some timelines that we can move. I gotta stress to council one thing, there was years we would be sitting here in January, February and approving, approving this budget in March and staff couldn't do anything. And then we were behind the eight ball when, when they were actually doing projects. That goes back to when I, I served here with Vance, when I served here with Ronnie. And it, and it was frustrating at the time because projects were being let all over the region, yet Port Coburn was stuck at the end on, especially on, on contracts. And, and we were waiting and waiting, waiting for our work to be done. Now, quite frankly, and I said this last year on, on Walter Senzick's, uh, radio show on, on, on C K T V, we're an envy of Niagara that we get our budget completed way before everybody else is starting. Like, we're approved long before anyone else. And it allows us to get our foot in the door first and to get projects off the ground first. We got, I, I believe that we get better value for our ratepayers than maybe some other municipalities do at times. You know, I think kudos has to go off to all of our staff in putting this together, starting this process in June and not now. You know, this bodes well for this community as we move forward in that, you know, we, we, we are getting things done. And as you rightfully said, counselor, it's been water sewer, water sewer, water sewer. And I think you're seeing the light at the end of the tunnel with regards to investments that we need to do to stop the leaking, stop the infiltration, to eventually get a, a bill that goes out to our ratepayer that's stabilized and, and fair. Um, you know, and we all, and pretty much all of us across, well, except for the two ward four counselors, we all pay water bills. And, you know, we see what, what needs to be done and, you know, we've sat around this table. And quite frankly, I didn't really wanna say this to begin with, but I've learned more in the last five years from this staff with regards to water and sewer than I've ever learned and really where the pitfalls are and, you know, not to cry over spilt milk, but, you know, I, I, I just think that, that, uh, Steve and, and a couple of his predecessors and, and the crew that they work with at Public Works has really laid those cards on the table to say, hey, guys, this is where we are. Nothing's been sugarcoated where, quite frankly, I can remember some budget meetings where staff kinda sugarcoated it so we felt really good by not raising rates when we, if we'd have grabbed a few percent more at the time, we'd be way ahead. But, but that didn't happen, even though there was arguments around this dais that, that some of us wanted to spend more and others didn't. Uh, we dipped into reserves back in the day to keep rates falsely low. Um, we are really coming out with a wholesome, uh, budget that gets things done and, and hopefully puts an end to, to what we do here. And Fort Erie, quite frankly, is in the same boat. I talked to Mayor Redicap about this, with their water sewer rates, they're, they're right along with us and it has to do with living with the rock and Lake Erie. So I, I, I gotta put kudos up there. Counselor?
Just touch base on one of the things you said, it's not the sixty-eight thousand against eleven million. You gotta remember that, that eleven million is already built, most of that eleven million is already built into, into, into the levy from these two percents every year, so it's, it's, uh, it's, it's not just that. So if, i- if I could just get some clarity on it, Mr. Mayor, um, we can go then with just the subject matters that are, uh, necessary to not stop. I'm, I'm just trying to clarify your point versus, um, dealing with the point-two-five. Like, you're gonna come back with the balance, projects you need to get started, G I S, uh, truck, all that can go ahead. Um, uh, system with Niagara Falls, those ones can go ahead.
Through the mayor to the, to the counselor, if, not just, not to walk away from the point-two-five, but, um, if we, well, I guess to address the point-two-five again, if, if council wants to consider the point-two-five further, one mechanism, and the clerk can correct me if I'm wrong, um, could be to approve the budget tonight. It goes to council and the C E O and the clerk and I will come back with an amendment for when council, because you haven't really approved the budget till it goes to council. Amend it to reduce, to, to hold back a portion of the funding, so you can approve the budget and we hold back so you can make that final decision in October on the remaining point-two-five. And then if you don't do it, then staff will be directed that point in time to cut, you know, the point-two-five.
Counselor?
That's just a little bit of a step too far for me. I, I would like to stick with the, um, that's why I asked the first question. I don't know which is more till you enunciated what point-two-five was. I'd really like to stick with, don't stop the train that's left the station on these projects. Like, you know, you, you, I don't want hesitation on the agreement with Niagara Falls. I don't want hesitation with water, wastewater, storm sewer. And there may be a few other projects in that long list. I thought of trucks, but they're, you know, they're, they're, you know, they need lead time. Um, it affects other things. I, I think to the mayor's point that I was gonna bring up is we've come so far from March to where we were last year. I think last year, what, we did them all in one night, but it was on the twenty-fourth or thereabouts. So for the, for the sake of one month, i- i- if it's not critical, I would suggest we still hold it.
So, uh, through the mayor to the counselor, I just, I'm gonna ask, most likely the clerk to help me out. We wanna do what council wants to do on this. And if council's direction is, um, we're happy with the projects, but we'd like you just to tell me the ones you really wanna start with today and then we'll give you a final approval or not in, uh, in the next month, staff, I think, is fine with that. The cleanest way to make that happen is not necessarily, I'm not the best person to advise on that, so I think we need to ask the clerk, uh, potentially to help us out and I think she's ready to, to, to help us out.
Yeah, just before we go there, Counselor Bruno, the recommendation really does let, give you that leeway. There's no date set in here. Um, we are approving, uh, at committee level, we're approving the budget, but we are allowing them to begin where feasible. So I think what you've talked about tonight, other counselors have brought forward, staff is getting the message where feasible. Where it comes back to council on the twenty-sixth, that wording, I think, needs to be dealt with between Brian, Sima and Scott so that we can approve something on the twenty-sixth, but there may be amendment coming back on the twenty-fourth. Are, are we all right with that, Madam Clerk?
So through your worship to counselor and, and I'll let the clerk answer too. I think, I think we hear loud and clear where council wants to end up with this. I think we want council to get what council wants. You, you sign the budget when it's all said and done, you sign our paychecks when it's all said and done. So we can make sure that we get there, but I think this is the point where, like, like these folks are gonna have to go back. I, and sorry, for those who can't see, there's twelve staff people there. We don't want them all to be in a giant battle royale to figure out whose projects are gonna be on the twenty-sixth and whose are gonna be a month later on the twenty-fourth and it's gonna be arm wrestling and, and so on. I think this is the point where we would probably be project-specific when it comes to, if there was something here that council could not bring forward to two thousand and twenty-four, that's a different conversation than we need to trim a little bit of the capital to ease the impact on stat, on, uh, taxpayers. So I think if we agree on that in principle, there are many, many projects here that won't be awarded, um, for months and months and months. Sidewalks, uh, road surfaces, I mean, even some of those amounts are going into reserve. So I think to the mayor's point, most recent point, there's an opportunity to provide, sorry, to approve the projects that are before you in the grand scheme of things, so these folks can go back and start to execute. But leave wiggle room to come back on it with an amendment on the twenty-fourth that reduces the total capital spend. Then it'll be a question of council and staff working together to see where that restructuring, reduction comes from. Is it a reduced reserve transfer or does money come in from reserves and so on? All with the caveat that I agree one hundred percent with the treasurer and the presentation. Th- this capital dollar spend has to be maintained from year to, and grown from year to year to year. Because every year that we are not at full replacement value, we're losing, we're creating an infrastructure deficit. But I agree that, I think that the idea here is to approve the budget in principle, refer it forward to the twenty-sixth, uh, twenty-sixth, right? Approve the projects that are before you on the twenty-sixth and then know that if we have to tinker with the dollar spend, that that comes to October twenty-fourth.
All right, so you're, you're fine with that, Counselor? Good. Any further questions, Counselor Baguette?
Just, just because you brought it up, Mr. Mayor, about ward four counselors maybe not caring because we don't.
Oh, I didn't say that. I just said you didn't pay.
Well, you kinda alluded to that. Well, you kind of alluded to that. So I'd never claimed to speak for council, Counselor Agulina, but, but in conversations and everything, certainly, we do, we do care about that water budget, because we have people in Ward Four that buy water, fill their cisterns. We have friends and family that live in the big city where they have sewer and water. So we actually do care about what happens to that. So I just wanted to throw that out there, and, you know, like, we take it pretty serious. Thank you.
Oh, I'm sure you do. When I lived in Ward Four and sat on this council, even though I represented Ward One, because that's where my business was, I used to get that a lot. Oh, you live in Ward Four, you don't pay for water, you don't care. I said, no, 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 I've got a business downtown that pays for water. I've got most of a family that lives in the, in the urban core that pays for water. So I agree, I'm just saying that you actually don't get that bill that we get, that you actually see it where, you know, you know, other than maybe filling your cistern, but yeah, it's, it's a, you know, it's a, it's a different cost to us than it is to somebody out where you. That's all. We know you care, because we appreciate you guys supporting the urban counselors with regards to moving forward with infrastructure. So anyways, thank you, Counselor. Further questions? Further questions?
I want tomorrow's deadline.
Yeah. Ward Four counselors couldn't give a hoot. No more questions?
Before that's what the property.
That's right, exactly. All in favor? That's carried. So that's the end of what you've got, Brian. So before we adjourn, just staff, again, thank you, guys. We really see what sweat you guys put in this budget, especially this year, you even started earlier, and, and the fact that, you know, you've got to struggle with what projects are brought forward to, to council to debate and decide what, what moves forward. But I think what we're providing our ratepayers is, is quality for the dollars that they pay in taxes here. Brian, thank you for leading the team and giving us a great presentation this evening. We, we thank those that are watching us on, on WeStream. Unfortunately, we didn't have anybody come live to our meeting. We wish that they would start coming out to budgets, because you really learn a lot when you come to these budget committee meetings. So we appreciate that, and with that, I adjourn this meeting.